Good evening. I would like, okay, now I can start. Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, November the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Like regular meetings or council of council, citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public input or public hearings, but do allow for public comment at the end of the work session unless otherwise called on by a council member. Please note speakers are limited in three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session other than to vote to place the item on the council meeting agenda for consideration of an official vote. Work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and the minutes are taken and posted on the town's webpage following approval of council. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce you to my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro team Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is council member Todd Law.
Good evening.
His left is council member Jeanne Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is council member Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
To his right is council member Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is council member Will Allen.
Good evening.
Council member Carnes will lead us in our vacation tonight.
Thank you, mayor. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we pause right now to acknowledge you, acknowledge you as the creator, the giver of all good gifts, the ultimate forgiver, the one who taught us grace and forgiveness, the one who cleanses us, the one who is the God of second chances. Oh, you're all things good and you are the foundation of everything we do and we just want to show our gratitude. We do want to be great leaders. We want to build a community that's full of justice, righteousness, goodness. Build a fair level playing ground for all people. Want to build a great society for our children and our children's children. So we ask for your wisdom and most of all for your favor in order to do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And I'd like to ask Mayor Pro team Ron Williams to please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will now call the meeting to order. An executive session council met prior to this meeting where we discussed the following matters. One routine personnel matter that we actually did not discuss. Legal advice regarding the West Columbia water litigation and advice regarding agenda items. No vote was taken throughout here or motion to ratify this report.
So moved.
Mayor Pro team makes the motion throughout your second. Councilman Smith, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand. You need to unanimous. Are there any deletions of items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we're moving on into our presentation. Our first presentation is about the results of the downtown Lexington parking study. Our transportation director Randy Edwards will come forward to introduce the study along with engineer Chris Isner from Kimberly Horn.
Good evening, mayor and council. As part of the twenty twenty-four top council objectives, the priorities from last February, March, we were tasked with seeking a qualified engineering firm to look at our existing parking. And with that, we selected Kimberly Horn and Chris Isner is known as an expert in the parking and the parking facility arena. And with that, he's put together a brief presentation which will summarize the report that was provided in your package. And we're happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have. That's Chris Isner.
Thank you, Randy. Good evening, council. As Randy mentioned, my name is Chris Isner with Kimberly Horn. We were brought on to partner with Randy and his team on the downtown parking study. Is that, oh, there it is. There we go. Okay. There were four main goals of this study when we jumped in. You can see on the screen, the first was to understand parking demand in the main downtown in our study area, which I'll describe here in a second where that area is outlined. The second is to see if the current downtown parking climate was one in which seeking public-private partnerships with private lots made sense to kind of take a shared use approach to downtown parking and better utilize the existing parking supply. The third thing we looked at was feasibility of structured parking in a few different existing parcels downtown. And the fourth thing we tackled was accessible parking within the study area to kind of see where accessible parking was today. So jumping in here to find our study area, you can see outlined in white. We extend beyond just the downtown core. We grabbed a bigger area up to radius, down to the old mill, up to just about the elementary school and then down through the public lots adjacent to the county offices there across the street. In total, there's about three thousand thirty-two hundred parking spaces in that study area. Granted, there's a mix of public and private. In the graphic in front of you, those lots that are identified in green are public lots. The ones in the yellow-orange color are private lots. So there's about twelve hundred a little north of twelve hundred public spaces in that area. So a little north of a third of the available parking supply within that total study area is public parking. Approximately seventy-five percent of the public spaces are right out here adjacent to the intersection of Maiden and South Lake. So they're kind of with the county offices across the street and then the parking lot here right outside of our building. And then, as you would likely expect, the larger private lots downtown serve the major churches in the area. So this is the meat of it, the parking demand, kind of that we see throughout downtown. We had to tackle that in some way. And I thank Randy and his team for helping us kind of come up with creative approach that was pretty efficient in collecting our data for this study. So the brute force method for parking demand data is walking, counting cars, takes time. But we were able to lean on the town to develop a drone flight path throughout the downtown area and fly a drone and capture some high-res images of the entire study area on seven different scenarios, which I'll describe here in a second, that allowed us to count park cars in each of these lots. So we didn't have to go walking through the whole downtown. We wanted to make sure we're getting a good cross-section of different times of day throughout a week when it comes to identifying and trying to understand what parking demand looks like. We captured seven different scenarios, like I mentioned. Three on a typical weekday, morning, midday, and evening. Three on a typical weekend, again, morning, midday, and evening. And then we captured an evening event scenario. The graphic on the screen is an example of one of seven graphics that are in the report that's in front of you that kind of correlate to each of those seven scenarios. It's a color-coded kind of heat map of what parking demand looks like in each of those parking lots in that specific scenario. So green, yellow, orange, red is your variability of parking demand least to highest. Green represents a zero to twenty-five percent occupied all the way up to the worst case red in this condition. So this situation is eighty-five percent or greater utilized. So we didn't throw all seven of those scenarios in this presentation, but we did grab the peak scenario, which was a weekday, midday condition. So as you can imagine, workday, lunch, lunch hour, peak is what kind of was the worst that we saw from the data collected. Public parking in this scenario peaked at forty-one percent occupied. Private parking was at twenty-nine percent. And then the total supply overall was right at about thirty-four percent. The highest utilized public lot during this peak condition was just outside the parking lot here, was at sixty-three percent. And then there's two red areas that probably pop out. It's kind of the worst case there. Those are two private lots. One kind of further down or their own way is the crouch is lot right across the street. And then there was the other red one further to the north. There's the on-street spaces on West Butler outside St. Stevens. So like I mentioned, we didn't put all seven scenarios graphically, but we did summarize them in a table here for this presentation. So left to right are the columns of the seven different scenarios. The bold column there is the weekday, midday scenario that we just showed the graphic of that peaked at thirty-four percent for the whole study area. Couple of things to note. In every scenario, the total was below fifty percent occupied from a total occupancy within the study area. The highest, you would probably imagine, the highest utilized parking areas were kind of outside office buildings, outside here, across the street, outside county offices, and then naturally around kind of the downtown core with businesses and restaurants and that sort of thing. On-street parking was nearly at capacity in every scenario that we recorded. And only in an event scenario did a public lot exceed eighty-five percent occupied. All other conditions, public parking was below eighty-five percent. And one thing I thought was interesting too is when when public parking peaks in the downtown kind of core, kind of a long main street and just adjacent, the large public lots here on South Lake were all less than twenty-five percent occupied. So that was a summary of the parking demand that we were able to capture. The second thing I mentioned at the beginning of the goals was to kind of consider public-private parking arrangements downtown and whether or not that would be beneficial to the town. Naturally, the idea here is try to capitalize on private parking when they are not at a peak, when maybe the public is peaking, public need is peaking at that same time so that we can share parking across a certain environment, be a little more efficient with the total parking system. And certainly what that has an ability to do as well is offset public's need to potentially build parking structure, a better use of the existing parking supply. One lot that stood out as a potential viable candidate for that was one twenty-seven East Butler directly behind Bodhi Thai. It remained nearly completely unutilized across all seven scenarios that we collected. And it's certainly in a great location as it relates to some of the downtown need in that downtown core. That being said, given the existing, the demand on public parking and how it was being utilized, particularly considering the underutilization of the public parking lots at the county building, we don't think seeking agreements like this is quite necessary at this time for the town. So while data suggests, the parking demand data that we collected suggests that there's ample parking in the study area, we did want to still consider what structured parking may look like in a few spots, like I mentioned, in the study area. Because certainly there's qualitative feedback and we've all probably experienced from time to time that parking is not necessarily always where you want it to be. It may be around, but it may not be as proximate as we may all desire. So we looked at a few spots. One, again, here across the street on Maiden Lane. One site immediately adjacent to the amphitheater on West Main and one site near that lot behind Bodhi Thai on East Butler. We threw a couple concepts at each of these parcels and came up with kind of a rough order of magnitude of number of spaces and how big each structured parking garage could be on each of these lots. And it's kind of hard sometimes to compare parking deck concepts from different sites because there's different things that drive that design, whether it's topography or access or just other considerations. But one thing I want to highlight is the second column from the right is the efficiency column. That's kind of the equalizer across all these things. It's the square foot per space. So it's the efficiency of the spaces that you're building in square foot, right? So the three options, the West Main option was the least efficient there. That's almost three hundred sixty square foot per space. And then the other two sites on Maiden and East Butler were about the same from an efficiency perspective. So again, like I mentioned, while parking demands maybe don't necessitate the need for structured parking, there are certainly other things that may drive that decision to do relates to proximate parking and economic development benefits that could result as part of that as well. Finally, the last item was accessible parking in the study area. Across the whole study area, we found that there were a hundred and forty total accessible spaces. Of that one forty, thirty were public, a hundred and ten were private. Those, the thirty parking, the thirty publicly available accessible parking spaces account for just right at two and a half percent of the total public parking supply, which is north of kind of the two percent industry standard of accessible parking required. So the quantity of parking provided downtown in parking spaces aligns with standards. I will make a comment that the proximity of those are all again around that intersection of Maiden Lane, South Lake. So they are kind of grouped in a spot that's maybe not as proximate when we talk about proximate parking to some of the demand drivers downtown, for instance, like the amphitheater. So to recap, the four things we were looking to capture as part of the study, we found that parking is adequate within the study area, private certainly, and public as well. Public-private parking agreements, not necessarily needed given this current condition and how public parking is being currently utilized. Structured parking is likely not required at this time either from purely a parking demand perspective, but certainly there's other considerations that go into decisions like that. And from an accessible parking inventory perspective, there's adequate accessible parking. Of all things, the proximity of parking of that, those specific spaces may not be ideal. So with that, that wraps it up. Happy to take questions if there are any.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm a mayor, I do. Thanks for me, you're doing, I'm actually there for doing the study. My first question for you is on page two in the study area section. It's noted that the, the study area was developed that generally included the downtown core. Is there a reason for that word generally? Did we look at areas outside? I mean, I read the study and I didn't see where we did, but that term generally stood out to me. Was there a reason for that?
A reason to say generally?
Yes.
There was not a reason to say generally.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there were.
No, sorry. No, we covered the downtown core. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So my next question for you would be, over how many days did we collect the data for each of the periods calculated?
Yeah, so our weekday that we collected was three. So we did the morning, midday, and evening, all on the same weekday. And that was Wednesday, August twenty-eighth. The weekend condition, all three were on the same weekend. And that was Saturday, August thirty-first. And then the event condition was an evening condition one day. And that was October tenth.
Can you help me understand, A, why did we only look at one day as opposed to studying this across multiple days and aggregating data to get an average? And then B, my follow-up to that would be, was there a methodology for the reason that we picked these particular days that we studied?
Just trying to find typical, typical day and distribution throughout a day. There's a, my perspective is that there's a balance in data collection on you can quit of finding a good middle ground of counting every day in a month versus getting a representative sample. So getting a representative sample over across a typical day seemed to capture the intent, the desire of this parking study. So that's how we landed on a weekday and typical weekend. And then the events were, we were trying to capture something that aligned with kind of the perfect storm of an evening where you had some event condition and still like downtown restaurant drawl, that sort of.
So, but you would agree that traffic is not static changes. You know, you go to Wednesday for our midday, early morning, you're in our here every day. You'd agree that a Monday may look different or a Friday may look different, right?
It's certainly possible.
So I guess again, my follow-up would be, why wouldn't we average that or have multiple calculations to show what the traffic would look like on a Monday morning versus a Friday morning or a Wednesday morning? Or excuse me, not the traffic, the parking. Why would we not look at that across multiple days? Because the impact that it has downtown could certainly be different. I mean, for example, think when Lexington one releases early on a Wednesday. Well, you try to park at Crouch or anywhere around downtown. Good luck finding a parking spot. But the next Wednesday when they're not out, you might have an easier way to find one. So can you just drill that down a little bit more? Help me understand why we wouldn't look across multiple weeks, multiple days?
Yeah, I mean, it was a, it was kind of, again, it was a balance of conversation with staff on getting an appropriate sample. It's something we can consider looking forward to try to figure out more if that's something we feel is to the benefit. But that's, I mean, that's how we landed on it, was trying to just get a representative sample without trying to collect too much.
Understood. And I guess I take issue with that because the day that you guys studied was three days, four days before Labor Day when many people are on vacation. So I wouldn't exactly define that as a typical day downtown. I mean, my office is downtown. The Saturday that you all studied was Labor Day weekend. And a simple check with our staff, we were fifty percent, fifty percent down at the market on the same day that you conducted the study. So I wouldn't say that's a representative sample. And then the Thursday night that you all studied for the event was the second day of the fair. And we all know many people go to the fair and it might not be a busy downtown. You know, so that's why I'm bringing up why didn't we look at this across multiple events, multiple days to help us get a better picture and understanding? Because those events that I just named certainly impacted the findings of this study.
Yeah.
Do you agree with that final?
I think that's a fair comment. Yeah. I don't have a great answer as to not collecting a full week and those specific counterpoints that you make. But at the time, discussion with staff, we were landing on trying to find a representative sample.
And I guess another question that I would have is, we have a steward or anyone on council, the amphitheater is nine hundred seats, right? So I went through the cross tabs of some of the data that you all gave us and it looks to me like there are four hundred and nine spots right here around the Maiden Lane area that are owned by the town. So we have nine hundred feet venue that we created. That is absolutely wonderful.
Absolutely.
But if you assume two people per car, maybe that's right, maybe that's wrong. I don't know. Some people, maybe it's one, maybe it's four. I don't know. We don't have enough parking spots that we own. So we are now relying on partners at the county or parking lots like where my office is, where oftentimes we'll drive in in the evening and citizens have filled that parking lot up, which is amazing. I love seeing them downtown, but you know, businesses that are abutting on Main Street, their customers can't park there. You know, so now they're trying to find a parking spot and it's impacting their retail. So to draw the conclusion that a parking garage or parking partnerships may not be needed, I just have a hard time understanding that when clearly the town doesn't have enough capacity for parking that we own and now we're placing that burden on other stakeholders.
Yeah, so that comment was specifically related to, in the scenarios that we collected, the utilization of the current publicly designated parking lots was severely underutilized. So that's what was driving that comment. So yeah, I understand. I think it, I think it may be approximate. Go back to that proximate parking kind of concept. But when you consider public parking kind of in and around downtown core as an aggregate, it was underutilized in the scenarios that we had.
But to be clear, y'all used the, I think it's seventy-three spots down at the Old Mill. You would consider that part of the downtown core. Like, I don't know many people that park at the Old Mill to walk to a concert at the amphitheater. I mean, I run that frequently. That's a mile. You know, so to think that we should include that in our number for parking capacity, that just also stood out to me as well, you know, as we're evaluating what we need downtown. The other question that I was going to ask you is, did we look at an event style such as, I did not see it in the study, such as fall festival or snowball festival when we closed down the Ice House Amphitheater parking lot? And I point that out because now when you do that, you've reduced the parking capacity of the town to three hundred and thirty-eight spots, down from four hundred and nine. We've lost our four closest accessible or ADA parking lots. And the closest one is now seven hundred feet away with about thirty feet of elevation gain going uphill. And the ADA, while it doesn't specify how close that should be, it does suggest it should be around two hundred. So we clearly don't have enough handicap parking space. So did we look at an instance where we closed down that parking lot at all?
We didn't. We only looked at that one, that one event condition.
Is there a reason that we didn't look at something like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't have any further questions.
Anyone else have any questions?
I do. Why do we go all the way to Radius Church? We don't, again, the amphitheater is here, but what happened to Old Mill? It said three spaces for Radius Churches way to the other extreme as well. What does that do to the capacity numbers if you take out the Old Mill and Radius?
So Radius isn't impacting when you consider public parking, is not impacting that piece? Is that, is your comment around public parking numbers? I'm sorry.
Well, private, private demand and public demand under those [inaudible]. I mean, I've seen some people walk down Main Street and park. Maybe a law officer too down that way, but I have never seen anybody walking except for at least part of it's on their fall festival. There's no place left, so everybody goes and they end up down that far. Why would we include those private facilities that far away? Is that not diluting, but it doesn't dilute the numbers? Makes the percentage is less when we include the Old Mill and we include Radius?
I guess in general, as a, if you were to, if you consider the aggregate number overall, then I, then yes, what your comment is valid. But when you look at individual lot-by-lot basis and lots are still underutilized individually, not necessarily in aggregate, and I think that's still the message of individual lots are underutilized in addition to the aggregate being underutilized. So the aggregate may not be as bad, right? If you take the, as underutilized, if you take the Radius numbers out, for sure.
Okay. And then we, one of the proposals on this down now, that one of the parking garages was for parking lot, the Ice House, right? Am I not correct?
No, it's not the best one.
It was not the best one, but I don't, didn't we give rights? We don't own the parking places that face the best mattress of laws. And it's just our property, is it not? Isn't that right, sir? Am I thinking by the right?
I think the garage was going on an adjacent lot.
On an adjacent lot. Okay. All right. Because it looked to me on the picture like it was right beside this building. It's like, I don't see how we can even obtain that.
It was at one fifteen, one fifteen West Main Street.
Okay. The next lot over. All right. That's all I got.
So if you're saying that we have out of the parking.
If you're saying that we have adequate parking, might other people tell us we don't?
Yeah, I think that's um, it's a proximity thing, um, which is is common. Um, I experienced it personally when I'm trying to go somewhere and I can't park as close out as I would like. Um, so I think it's a, it's more of a proximate parking. Um, concern versus a, an aggregate parking concern.
And then on the accessible parking, you said that we have an adequate amount, but they're not possibly in the right. The center of where they need to be. Um. I guess you didn't give any suggestions of how to fix that, or I guess that wasn't part of your scope?
Right, it was more of just an, an inventory of of where, how how many and where are they located? What is the structure?
So how far is on random to fix that?
Um, but no, the com- the comment more on location was, and you you mentioned it too, is the. The topography between kind of that part of town, getting up to kind of the driver, the the demand driver of the hill, for sure.
And and that's a concern and then, you know, some sidewalks and stuff too. So that's the concern and how to spots to where people can park that need to.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Could I just ask you a follow up? I I struggle with you saying that, you know, we, that we have adequate parking. Because we're relying on private parking. We're not relying on the parking that we provide. We've created wonderful venues parks for our citizens. But to uh fully have um capacity in those. We will have to utilize private parking lots. So how, how can you say that we have adequate parking? When we built these wonderful venues, but we don't have the parking to support them? From a public perspective, so now we're placing the burden on businesses around. Or churches.
Um. I I guess the, the the reason for the comment goes back and it, and it relates some time, I have a number here. Relates to. Data collected, right? So scenarios collected and utilization of current, what is identified as public parking. That's available to to visitors. So. Those public parking lots have less than fifty percent demand in all of the conditions that we collected data for. So that, that is the driver of the comment. It's in, in in every condition that we looked, every scenario that we looked. There is a surplus of public parking. And with, within the the core, not necessarily even lumping in spaces down at the mill, but looking at an individual lot by lot basis, public lots. All less than twenty-five percent utilized.
On one day that you studied?
Said this, all seven scenarios.
But on one day, each each scenario was still on one day for our belief, one, two or three hours each.
Yeah, seven snapshots, for sure.
Is the, is the study complete? I mean, is your work complete with us, or is there follow up work here or?
Um, that was the, that was the end of this. Of this current contract, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Right. Just a follow up, I just made sure I'm not confused there. So, we delineated the the scope from the whole middle radius, but. What I'm hearing you say is, forget private parking, uh, just, just public parking. We looked at seven scenarios and in those seven scenarios, just public parking. Uh, within individual parking lots, not, not the entire area, but individual parking lots. We were at about fifty percent utilization in those parking lots. Individually or collectively, was it individually or collectively? I think you have that on a slide.
Yeah, I'm trying to find, find that too, so.
I think you could back, I think you could back it up. You know, there's a few reds that were eighty-five percent utilized.
That's right, those are private.
I know there's certain scenarios. Uh, where that's the case, but the, the public parking was, did I hear you say that right? About fifty percent utilization. In every scenario that you looked at.
Um, public parking only?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
I was just trying to understand, make sure.
Yes.
In public private thing?
Uh, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to make sure I'm communicating it appropriately. So. Of the seven scenarios, one of them was an event scenario.
Right.
And only in that event scenario did a designated public lot exceed eighty-five percent occupancy.
Okay.
And when that happened. The large public lots down here on South Lake were all less than twenty-five percent occupied.
The large, we're talking the grass lots down South Lake.
County, yes.
No, the, the county, the county lots across, across South Lake, South Lake.
The county, the county, okay.
So what about the grass lots?
Um. The, the nearest grass lot was one of those lots that exceeds eighty-five percent occupancy in the event condition. The furthest, if I'm remembering correctly, the furthest grass lot did not.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Our next presentation is from Utilities Department Director David Winer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, just gonna give you one of the updates since last we spoke about the lead and copper rule. It is now the lead and copper rule improvements, um, as the revisions were approved back on October eighth. Um, just to let you know, we're still gonna, working through digesting everything that has um come through that, so. As we do that, this plan may be tweaked a little bit. Um, the major stuff in that plan is already taken care of in the uh, the outline. And we are working through it. Um, so since we last spoke, we have notified all of our customers that fell into a lead or a galvanized. Line requiring replacement, that they fell into those categories. That was done within thirty days of sending the regulators our inventory as required, so we met that. Um. The town has a process in place to notify new customers of the category um upon service initiation, so we worked through that. And we are still putting together information for our utilities webpage. Um. I just wanted to point out, I hadn't pointed this out before, that that's not required of a water system of our size, but we feel like. Um, not only is it doable, but that's the best way to communicate with our customers. Um, and we think that that will be um integral once we roll out our replacement capital plan. Um, we'll be able to update that web, so when you go on, you put your address in, it'll let you know that type of information. Um, other than that, the bullets there are pretty much the same. Um, the one change I did make. When um talking about our capital plan, this must be available to the public. So that's one reason why um I'd like to tie that into our, our webpage um for our customers. Um, there is gonna be additional sampling um that comes out of this and the levels of what's acceptable are gonna change as well. Um, once I digest all of that, I'll present it to you, um, the specifics of it. So. It's kind of the update and overview. Are there any questions? It's a little bit drier than what we just listened to.
Very important. So then we um, we got your letter, Mission Lexington, and all the ladies got it first. Uh, how many, uh, how many phone calls have y'all received about that?
The phone calls have been spread out among many departments, so customer services had plenty. Um, utilities have had plenty. We've had them at Bruner, we've had them upstairs. Um, we've got a spreadsheet going now. I would say the first couple days, we were in the neighborhood of about thirty. Um, thirty calls. Um, it's quieted down just a tad bit. Um, so hopefully they're getting good information and.
Authority's not bad considering how many you're serving, so.
No, it is not.
Yeah. That's great. I just want to make sure you guys were getting it run over.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet. You almost got authority from Mission Lexington tossed away, give me a lift.
Yeah.
So, thank you for doing that.
Anything else? Okay, David, you can move right on into your next one, where you'll be recognizing some of your great staff.
Yes, so, um, Madam Mayor, I wanted to thank you for your shout out in the um town topics. Um, in that you discussed how the Utilities Department had worked around the clock to ensure that our customers had drinking water and sewer service. Um. And like you, I also wanted to thank the Police Parks and Transportation folks.
They were doing well.
You know, I, it's the subject matter. Um, because they, they helped us and what I wanted to highlight really was not just the storm Helene. Um, but as you know, immediately following that aftermath, we got hit with um the blowout on South Lake. And that was a, a major issue and um. It stressed the team pretty good, stressed our contractor pretty good as well. Um, and so for that seventeen day period, um, I just wanted to focus the spotlight just a little. For anybody who's, who's listening, that we appreciate them. Um. So when Helene came through and hit those power outages. We had a hundred and twenty approximately, over a hundred and twenty-seven stations went without power. Um, and some of them for days. And this is all at once. And the impact of that is that. Several stations, um, it causes a shutdown and then it causes a ramp up. And you get a surge in the system. We had pipes that were in rough shape that blew out completely. Um, we had, of course, stations we couldn't get to um to check. We had um staff issues. So during that time period, um, we were sitting at about thirty percent vacancies in our field staff. And of our existing staff, fifty percent of them had one year or less of experience. Um, so. You know, it's one of those things, if we're doing our job as a department, nobody knows that and they're, they're thankful and that's a good thing. Um, but sometimes you just wanna shine that spotlight on the ones, especially the experienced ones that kind of stepped up in in lead. And so that's what I'm, that's why I'm here essentially. Um, so what I wanted to do was recognize some of the folks, obviously not the entire department, but the ones that. Really kind of raised the bar. I'm gonna call out by, by name. It's not gonna take too long, but. Um, the first bullet I want to start with is um Tim Thompson. During those seventeen days, he put in sixty-three and a half hours of overtime. Um, so worked his butt off. Um, the next group, Madison Leonard, Mike Nicewoner, Danny Brown, John Erickson, John Rushton worked. Um, between thirty-five and forty-one hours for those seventeen days. This is above their regular working hours. Um, the next group, Vasco Smith, Mark Carroll, Joseph Jolly and Sammy Rowland worked twenty-five to thirty-one hours. Overtime. Um, Stuart West, Chase Thompson, Landon Davis and Matthew Sprouse worked twenty-one to twenty-two and a half hours of overtime. And this is um everybody kind of coming together to do that twenty-four seven. Um. When we can't get in there and you have no power, you can't get your emergency generation, you've gotta get a pump truck there. So you're driving, you're pumping. You're driving it out, you're discharging, you're going to another station and you're rotating the trucks. Um, meanwhile, one of our trucks got, got trapped in there because it got to a station at Tree Falls on the driveway behind it. Um, luckily not on them as they were pulling in, but it trapped our people in that truck. So that truck was, ended up out of commission the entire storm. Um, the people we got out of there and they were reallocated, much to their pleasure. Um, and then Jared Lowen, Nelson Adney, Josh Altman and Kevin Piston, I've worked fifteen to nineteen, nineteen and a half hours um there. And. Finally, um, I wanted to give um really thanks to the entire supervisory staff. Um, because all of them stepped up, every single one of them took a shift uh for the pumping and hauling that went on during, during that period. Um, the ones I already noted, um, John Rushton, Madison Leonard and Sammy Rowland. Um, I did not note Dan Crouch, um, but I want to take a moment to do so because he would have had. Um. An excess of amount of, of um hours during that period too, except he came down with pneumonia. Um, but during the main break. He was working the phone, he was calling, I was in touch with him in the middle of the night as he worked to help. Um, all with the mon- pneumonia, so um the epitome of dedication really. And then, last but not least, I'm gonna call out um Billy Gunner, our superintendent, who signed up, took one of those pump and haul shifts. Um. And of course, doesn't show up on the overtime list because he's a salaried employee, um, but that makes him no less dedicated. So I think together all of these employees, along with the support during those situations we got from the other departments. Um, kind of epitomized the dedication and the teamwork that we're looking for here at the town. So. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for doing a great job with your work. Tell them thank you.
Certainly will.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I sort of like to add that and just, you mentioned, I think you said a hundred and thirty-seven pumps, we had a hundred and thirty go down and.
Hundred and twenty out of one twenty-seven, yes, sir.
That's obviously a little evangelistically, uh, but uh, but a hundred and twenty out of a hundred and twenty-seven, just. Just for clarity for people that might be listening, those are a hundred and twenty-seven pump stations that collect our raw sewage. Pump it down to Casey, and so they have wet wells, and so if they have huge power outage like that. Uh, if you can't get those things pumped out, you have huge sewer spills, which are, which are environmental catastrophes. Health catastrophes, and and I, I had no idea we had a hundred and twenty-seven pump stations in our service area, but it is. Maybe one of the most critical things we do related to public health, regarding our drinking water, related to all kinds of things, and there is no. There is no backup plan other than a bunch of hardworking men and women in our apartment. Pumping up and working an additional sixty hours over seventeen days, which is not, not easy work. Uh, it's physical, it's demanding, and so just to add a little commentary on that because it is. Without your people stepping up, we have a, an environmental and health catastrophe. And so we're very thankful for that. It's hard to, it's hard to plan for those and at that time, it's a central service just like. Just like our hospitals and everything else. And so please uh extend our ultimate gratitude to your team. And let them, let us know how we can support them because they are some of the most critical employees in, in our county. We're really appreciative.
Yeah, certainly will be.
And I know a lot of them had their own catastrophes at home and also were without power and everything too, so. Shows even more that they were stepping up to make sure our citizens were well taken care of. We appreciate it.
Yep, I will pass it along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we go into our business items, um. For this meeting to be placed on the December the second council meeting. Tonight's first business item is Finance Director Kathy Farah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Board of Home Villas Homeowners Association has requested reimbursement for streetlights and for trash pickup for calendar year twenty twenty-three. The letter of request is attached in your packet. They were annexed on March sixth, twenty twenty-three, and the roads are privately owned and are not wide enough for our current trash pickup contractor to navigate without causing property damage. So in accordance with the town's residential streetlight ordinance, the town would be responsible for one street light per six lots, with the current rate being twenty-three thirty-one per light. And then the town's solid waste collection and disposal ordinance provides for trash pickup with the town's contractor at a rate of twelve seventy-six per household through June twenty twenty-three, and thirteen twenty-seven for July through December. So when you do all the math, I put it there for you, if you want to recalculate, it comes up to eight thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. So I'm just asking that you put it on the December agenda for approval of reimbursement to Boardwalk Villa Homeowners Association.
And Kathy, just for verification, this is all in our residential streetlight ordinance, just like we do from, is it Pilgrim Point?
It's Pilgrim Point, we do streetlights for Pilgrim Point. There's two ordinances to cover this, one is the trash ordinance and one is the streetlight ordinance.
Kathy, do I hear a motion to put it on the agenda?
Subwooze.
May I approach him and make some motion during second?
Second.
Councilman Carr, second, is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, the lights are self-explanatory, but the sanitation agreements, the garbage pickup, do they have a community collective, I'm just wondering, are we giving this money to the HOA, for the HOA to decide how to distribute it, or is it guaranteed to go to the actual homeowners themselves?
Well, it's going to the homeowners association, and they have paid, they pay for the trash pickup for that.
They collectively pay for it?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. But if they didn't, in a scenario where they didn't collectively pay for it, we would have some kind of requirement that that goes back to the homeowners themselves.
Well, I mean, I think you would have to make sure that they're paying, they're having it done and paying for it.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's reimbursable, if they weren't doing it collectively, then it wouldn't be...
And we really don't encourage this type of situation, because we'd rather keep them on our contract so that we can kind of manage it, but because of the situation with it being private roads and that the roads are a little bit on the small side for our contractor, that's why we would consider doing this for them.
I understand.
And they provided you the documentation of the council checks for that, too.
Okay.
Anything else? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next business is, I guess our last item, is from Transportation Director Randy Edwards. This is a good one.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring before you the second edition of the Local Transportation Improvement Plan Request. The original LTIP was adopted in twenty eighteen and is in need of an update. The LTIP is used to identify the highest transportation-related safety concerns in town and serves as a guide to mitigate impacts from private, commercial, and residential developments. Staff included a hundred thousand dollars in the FY twenty-five budget request to update the existing plan. As part of the council's top priorities for twenty twenty-four, the council identified the need for what we've termed an all-inclusive traffic plan, which has greatly expanded the original scope. After working with local transportation and traffic professionals to develop a structure for this proposed comprehensive traffic plan, a cost proposal in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was received. The proposal does include developing a local travel demand model that considers the traffic impacts from areas outside the actual town limits. And so the exhibit that was attached shows the actual area that we would be including inside of this new LTIP, if you will. So the original LTIP was just thirty-two intersections. This is planned to actually be modeled after the COES travel demand model and be shrunk down to look at just our area and how the development of our areas then impacts the core of traffic in the town election. And so with that, we would like to request additional funds in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. The original budget was a hundred, we have per steward an additional fifteen that was saved from the impact fee request. And so he has stated that that would be able to come from the general fund contingency in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to put this on the agenda?
Subwayed.
Councilmember Law makes the motion during your second.
Second.
Councilmembers, yes, second, is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Edwards, is my understanding that this will help us enforce the requirements upon developers for other traffic improvements when they bring these types of things to us in the future, is that right?
Yes, very similar to how we currently use the LTIP that we've got.
But this gives us the backing and the wherewithal to do that, or the substance behind it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I'm all for anything traffic related, so thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, thank you for doing this, Randy, and I think it's one of the most important things that we can do right now. I think all of us know that our citizens feel like one of the biggest concerns in the town is traffic congestion. And traffic is a good thing, traffic congestion is a fun thing. So this plan will certainly look at how we can address that and mitigate traffic congestion. So I just simply wanted to say thank you for tackling this.
Absolutely.
And Randy, I thank you too for doing this, and I appreciate the scope that you did. I would also like to encourage you to work with, after the first of the year, the county staff and let us work with some of the political people over there and see if we can get them to take this and also utilize it if it's not in the town limits, when they're having development too, and cause traffic improvements to be made in the county, so that'll be a thing for us going forward, if we can do that.
I don't remember how I want to call it. The other thing that I, where I was going with that, is I'll say thank you. The other thing is oftentimes, we hear that the town of Lexington is doing nothing on traffic, you know, and they're not doing anything. Well, that's not the case, you and your team are doing incredible work to help mitigate traffic where we can. And I think oftentimes, that work goes unnoticed, so I would just like to know that I think as we prepare this, and I don't remember what the expected timeline is, but as we prepare to roll that out, I think it's inherent on us to make sure that we have a good communications plan to roll out the findings of that, so that we are informing the public, so that they know that the town of Lexington is taking traffic congestion seriously and touting the good work that you and your staff and these consultants are doing to address that.
Thank you. Just for, so y'all have heard this before, so the original LTIP identified thirty intersections, of which we have touched almost two-thirds, which is one of the drivers for why we need to come back. And it's not in its entirety, two-thirds, pieces and parts of each one have been addressed here and there, but the LTIP was to identify that, there's been other locations that weren't included in that original one that are just outside of the town limits. And so this is a goal to help bring some of that in, so we can look a little more broader than the original.
And how many intersections is this?
This is only planned to zero down on twenty, so that we actually have a top twenty, but it'll look at all those intersections that are identified in that scope, which is greater than that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. So I'm looking at this, and this goes to Corley Mill on the east side, Detroit Oak on the west side, down the industrial and to the left, right? So my understanding is that the cog has a significant traffic study currently underway for Corley Mill. What is our overlap, what is our synergy, what is our deal with that?
So I served on the Corley Mill Corridor Steering Committee. That is a corridor-specific plan, which is looking at each of the nodes throughout that corridor to come up with a node-by-node improvement for current conditions, plus also what it looks like growth-wise. Because that road is heavily traveled and needs safety improvements, as well as other traffic efficiency improvements.
This is more based on for intersection improvements, correct?
Yeah, ours is more, well, it's both now. The original LTIP was an intersection, which is what we had planned to move forward with, was an update. And in working with council, what we discovered was the interest in having, how does outside traffic demand influence traffic inside? So that's why we've now gotten with Tony Shepherd of CECS, and then Rob Dubnica of Meaden Hunt, which are both local traffic experts. And so having them be able to take what is the COES travel demand model and kind of dwarf it down to meet ours, so that we can then extrapolate some good information from that, so that we can then move into potentially, you know, if there's ever potential for a county overlay, those types of things, where we can really start looking at having some influence on county improvements, because that traffic comes through town.
And Tony's been around this area a long time and knows it very well, no problems.
And, I was just going to say, to speak about Tony, but Tony was instrumental in our successful one-way pair, Northlake Corridor, or Northlake widening, and then the Northlake Corridor project yet to be done, because he basically performed those traffic models for us.
I hate to call him out, but he's been around longer than that discussing it with us, too. He's been around a long time. A lot of confidence with him a long time before that.
Madam Mayor, yeah, just by way of follow-up, though, it's quite a significant investment, right? So nobody cares, nobody cares to see numbers on a paper, but I want to see asphalt on the ground. So how do we get from this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar document to asphalt on the ground as far as the deliverables go and making improvements, can you connect those dots for us?
Yeah, so a couple of things, there's both public and private projects that have been identified in the original LTIP. The public ones currently are, we're about to begin the Mineral Springs right turn lane, that's identified in the original LTIP. There's the project I'm working through as hard as we can, but the old Cherokee turn lane widening, addressing the safety issues at that intersection, three seventy-eight Old Cherokee Road. That project has been funded and ready, it's ready to go, but we're just running the roadblocks of private property ownership and such things. So that's in the works. So that's kind of the ones that have identified in the original LTIP. We're obviously unsure what will truly be identified in this LTIP. But the other part that kind of gets, because it's stuff like myself and Jessica, we just handle, is private developers come in, and we refer to this document to help us in how they need to mitigate their trips outside of what is specific to their driveway access, those types of things. And so there's numerous projects, I think we've got, the last count that I did, I think it's close to a year old now, but it's like six point eight million dollars of private development road improvements that will be seen in the town election as those developments, you know, occur. And those developments range from, you know, gas stations to residential, those types of, you know, it's any and all, you know, private development.
Yeah, that was the information I was fishing for, so you're saying current estimates are about six point eight million private developer money into intersection and traffic improvements as a result of their impacts and their impact fees also. Their impact fees go towards those specific projects, so that if somebody puts a neighborhood, let's say, two hundred house neighborhood within a quarter mile of a traffic light and degrades that traffic light in that intersection, the LTIP document and study allows us to require that developer to improve that intersection at his or her own cost as a part of the development, which we've been doing in the past and will continue to do in the future, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor.
May I approach you?
Mr. Ford, Randy alluded to the fact that some of the impacting money can be used for this. Does there really have a dollar amount in mind, that we could cap out of that? Or is it based on a ratio to the area? How do we come up with, how are we able to put a number on, or do we have to use?
So, the impact fees, you have to follow a process, adopt a capital improvements plan. And when we did that in twenty nineteen, late twenty nineteen, the LTIP was instrumental in identifying specific projects that could be incorporated into the overall impact fee capital improvements plan. And the impact fee in general, the idea is that new growth pays for its impact on the system. And so there's a cost that's contributed by the new development, and there's a cost that current users may have to absorb for projects that benefit more than just new development. So those are the basic elements, you have to identify the projects that are eligible and include them in your CIT. And that's what we've done, some of the ones that Mr. Edwards mentioned are included in that impact fee CIT.
Great, thank you.
Maybe one more comment, and that's all we get tonight.
I just wanted to add into what Councilman Carr said, because I think it's really important. Yesterday, there was a Facebook warrior out there that said that the town of Lexington was teaming up with a developer to bring a development out to a particular road in town. And shortly thereafter, if you're in the comments, they very quickly corrected them and said, "Well, the town doesn't team up with any developers to bring a home neighbor, a neighborhood to an area, but what they do do is they use their LTIP and they use their impact fees to require that developer to make traffic improvements." So oftentimes, we're asked, "Well, why do we annex properties into the town that are right on the outskirts?" And that's one of the many reasons, is because as opposed to the county, we have our LTIP that allows us to require, when a developer is impacting traffic so closely to the town, we can use the LTIP, point to it, and require them to make improvements to the intersection. So I just wanted to say that for the record, because I saw that yesterday, and I just kind of didn't laugh that you were even...
Your impression, I think that has been removed.
Great.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I had a motion in the second, we had a discussion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. And that is all we have tonight, any questions from the news media, I don't think I've seen any here, so we don't have any comments from the public regarding items listed tonight on the agenda? Any additional comments from staff? So that concludes our business for tonight's work session. Thank you for watching the council work session for the town of Lexington. The meeting was held at town hall on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, without objection, we are adjourned.